Meeting for December 17th, 2019 at 9:00 AM. Linda, if you would, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Here.
Dave Line?
Yes, here.
Soldner?
Here.
Iris Day Carvalom?
Here.
Ainskey?
Here.
Fudge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the prayer. Kim Burgis will kindly join us.
You're invited to pray with me. Emmanuel God with us. Watch over us as we continue to wait during this Christmas season for hope to be born anew. Let us make room for the Savior of the world in the crowded ends of our hearts. Today, Lord, direct our leaders and this meeting with the goal of peace on earth, goodwill to all. We pray all of this in the name of the newborn King Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Kim. Great words. Next item.
Item four, proclamation for Grace Arbor Neighborhood.
I'd like to ask Larry and Rosa Bass to join me.
Whereas the southeast quarter of Section 12 Township 23 South, Range 6 West, was platted early in Hutchinson's history, filling the space bordered by Main and Plum Streets and Fourth and 11th Avenues. And whereas, the area has been home to numerous schools over Hutchinson's history, including Hutchinson High School, Central Elementary School, Ferris Elementary School, Central Junior High School, St. Teresa's Catholic School, Hutchinson Community College, and Grace Hospital School of Nursing. And whereas, the Hutchinson Housing Commission endorsed the area around Ferris Elementary School to be a featured neighborhood of the Hutchinson Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative on December 19th, 2018. And whereas, residents had their first meeting to discuss neighborhood issues and identify priorities on May 30th, 2019, and continued to meet on a monthly basis. Whereas, residents voted during a meeting on July 25th, 2019, to set their neighborhood boundaries as Main and Plum Streets and Fourth and 11th Avenues. And whereas, residents voted during a neighborhood cleanup day and picnic on September 28th, 2019, to name the neighborhood Grace Arbor Neighborhood. In honor of the neighborhood's history as home of Grace Hospital, and in recognition of neighborhood streets named after trees. Now, therefore, I, David Ainskey, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the neighborhood between Fourth Avenue and 11th Avenues from Main Street to Plum Street as Grace Arbor Neighborhood.
Welcome to Plum. If you'd like, you can say some things. Adam, yourself as well, please.
Well, Larry and I and Janice were accepting this proclamation, but there's been a lot of people involved in the monthly meetings, the plannings, the cleanup project that we had, and we're all dedicated in making this neighborhood a clean and safe neighborhood. And Adam wanted me to say that there is, the Grace Arbor Annual Meeting is on Saturday, January 25th, at 10:30 at the Salvation Army. And this is an annual meeting for all of the neighborhoods or just ours?
Just yours.
Just ours, okay.
There will be meetings for the other neighborhoods.
Thank you, Adam.
I don't know exactly how Adam got us to do this, but we want to thank him and Hutch Rec for getting the ball rolling. And I've lived in this area off and on over 50 years, and I've seen its ups and downs. And I'm just hoping we see strictly ups from now on.
Great.
Very good. Congratulations.
All yours. I'm glad to hear that we have another neighborhood that's found itself, found its name, and is doing great work. We've seen real positive things coming out of the other neighborhoods that have banded together and started working towards positive goals. So, we welcome Grace and Grace Arbor Neighborhood and hope they continue to do good work as well. Next item, please.
Item five, oral communications from the audience.
Okay. This is the portion of the meeting where we ask folks in the audience who want to address the council to go ahead and approach the podium, announce your name and address, and I'll limit your remarks to five minutes, but come on up. Jim?
James R. Gillon, 5106 East 3 of Hutchinson. Rod Jones, Burke Wealth Management. Angela Richards, Finance Department of Hutchinson. And you, sir?
Rod Schlaas, Director of the Animal Shelter. We are representing the Gossage Charitable Foundation. And it was established in 2007 by Bill and Gladys Gossage in their trust for the benefit of the animal shelter. And in 2008, we asked the city to pass a bond issue, $500,000, to do the addition to the animal shelter. And Angela informed us that we have paid 10 years on that bond, and it was front-loaded, as I understand the term, which means that we paid more money in the first 10 years and less money in the second 10 years. So, we're still paying those bonds for another 10 years, but we have extra money that was generated by this endowed fund for the benefit of the animal shelter. Clearly, the trust language said to benefit capital improvements, which that was, and help with the budget. And when the city announced during the budget process that the animal shelter was having some issues and might have to cut staff and cut some things, we thought, why wouldn't we use the excess money that we generate annually to do that? So, we're presenting a check today for $30,000 to the city for the animal shelter.
Wonderful. Good. Merry Christmas, Sam.
But the main reason I wanted to do this instead of just mail a check is to bring attention to the fact that a private group, two individuals that had no family and wanted to, and had lots of animals, wanted to benefit the city. And you can do a city department, like the animal shelter, or parks, or forestry, or whatever you'd like to do, through a private foundation and make it very meaningful for the budget and the operation of various city entities. And we want to make sure that people know that, and hopefully, this will bring some attention to that. That is our purpose.
Thank you.
Excellent. You bet. Thank you.
And we may be looking for another project.
There you go. Very good. Excellent.
You bring up a good point, Jim, the availability to have that philanthropy, and it is out there. It's just a matter of locating those individuals that have a passion and getting it with the right investment folks with the foundations so that they can earmark that towards their heart cause, whatever that is. So, good thoughts. Thanks. Next, Dejada.
Good morning. Dejada Moore, the Human Relations Officer for the City of Hutchinson. It's an opportunity I'm taking today to tell you a little bit about what's happening with the commission. At the beginning of my time here in Hutchinson, it was obvious that there was a severe need for addressing discrimination issues. And in the first three months, I received nine complaints from various areas of concern. Overall, to date, I have taken in a total of 19 cases with 25 bases of discriminating acts within the community. Comparing that number to what we have received in neighboring, what I've seen in neighboring communities such as Emporia and Pittsburgh, which also have human relations commissions, that is tracking fairly high. Additionally, outreach is an effort that is a focus of the commission to ensure that the people know how they can be helped by the commission. As a part-time officer, it can be challenging to meet all the people where they are due to time constraints and the fact that many persons that may be in need of the support are often not accessible during a typical workday. So, that's why I have made, and our commission has made concerted efforts to attend evening and weekend events that allow us to connect to those populations. Just a couple of things that are happening now within the commission. The commission has a community diversity survey, which currently has received over 300 responses. At this time, a quick visual analysis indicates that more than 80% of those respondents believe that discrimination is still an issue in Hutchinson. The commission is also working with multiple organizations in the city, like the Community Foundation, Young Professionals of Reno County, Hutchinson Regional Hospital, and Hutchin Harmony, and NAACP, in an effort to put on our workshop, "Deconstructing Equity." By partnering with these organizations in the community, we are able to build those foundational relationships with groups who also understand the importance of equity and justice for all the people of Hutch. A couple of other things that the commission is doing. We recently had a commissioner resign, so we're working on the recruitment of that commissioner's replacement. And then, the commission is meeting with the housing, the Housing Commission, to discuss the preparations for the Tenant Landlord Handbook, which we anticipate will come out in 2020. Finally, the commission met last night, and we did small training about their responsibilities and the goals of the commission, and I believe that we're setting a course of real correction of how we can engage properly within the community and on behalf of the city. So...
Wonderful. I would echo that, and I know I've received some applications for the positions. I'm poring over those currently to see who make the best fit, but I've seen a real energy with the group that maybe was in waning, if anything, but it seems like it's coming back in an active involvement, which can only help the situations that we find ourselves in.
That's right.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And tell the commission, good job.
You certainly seem to be doing a whole lot more than a part-time position, so I'm not sure how you're making time for all of it.
I don't sleep much.
Dejada, your channeling is very good, the channeling of the commission and mentoring and providing some direction. And I think that was, I think that the energy that David talked about waning was kind of part and parcel of that, so giving some direction is really an important part that you're playing, and very good work there.
Good. It's critical. And just a quick note, we've got badges now, so...
Yeah.
Official. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mrs. Sellers?
Good morning. Excuse me, got a frog today. My name's Tom Sellers. I'm CEO of Luminous Neon, 1429 West Fourth, here in Hutchinson. We're proud to be headquartered here. We're the largest sign company in the state of Kansas. We have 75 employees statewide, over seven locations, approximately 50 of our team members here in Hutchinson. We work all over the state, and into Missouri and Oklahoma, frequently across the nation on occasion. And we've got a concern with something going on in the community, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention and ask for some consideration. In late October, city of, the city staff surprised us with an immediate enforcement and new interpretation of the sign code. The city is now requiring us to have engineered stamped drawings for ground-mounted signs, freestanding signs over four feet tall. This was simply a new form on the site where we upload information to planning, to review and approve permits for signs. No notice, no discussion, no forewarning. We worked very hard to be a good collaborator and corporate citizen, as in our own hometown, helped craft the latest two new sign codes that have been enacted in recent years. We have former city council member and my protector today, Cindy Prohet, on our staff primarily to do this, to work with city codes across the region, with city planners to craft good code for the cities and for the business communities. The problems we see with this new policy is it is costly to customers, approximately $300 to $500 in additional expense per project. We have to engage an engineer. We've used one that specializes in sign structures, and then we have a few hundred dollars' worth of cost to get that information prepared to send to the engineer for the review. So, that's an additional cost to the customer, the business community. It's time-consuming, can add 10 days to two weeks to a process before we get that information submitted to the city, reviewed and approved, before we can start construction on a project. And it's out of step with other communities in the state. In the last two years, we've engaged this, been required to engage this seven times. And we do this literally hundreds of times a year all over the state. Our team has met with both planning and with building inspection to find, see if we can find common ground. I invited Trent out. We had an excellent visit, very, very cordial and understanding visit, hoping to find some common ground, something we could find in the middle. I'll let Trent speak for himself, but he indicated he'd reached out to several in his trade specialty, and that they do require this. And I think really the departure, where we are as sign companies, and I speak for the industry, we typically work with planning. So, the codes may require engineering. The planning department isn't enforcing it for whatever reason, and I can't speak for that. We surveyed a lot of communities that indicated they, well, we occasionally require it if we see something doesn't look right. So, it was a very mishmash report on how this is enforced. I am concerned as a citizen of Hutchinson and a businessperson that Hutchinson not be overly restrictive and un-business friendly. I understand the intent. Safe, public safety is a big deal. I'm not against public safety by any mean. This would just really put us out of step with the rest of the state, in our view. If I'm allowed to make a request, I would ask that the council consider suspending this requirement until, and I've talked to John a couple of times on this, it's just going to take some time to do a lot of research and put something together. At this point, we're not allowed to pull a permit over four feet tall of a ground-mounted sign without this information, and I'd like the council to consider suspending that requirement until time can be invested to see if we can find a middle ground. I'd be happy to answer questions.
We have the Building Trades Board. Have you had an opportunity to visit with them or?
No.
Okay. And Trent, I might ask you to join us at the podium as well.
Please.
And Tom, stick around, we might have some questions for you as well. Is this, in fact, a place where that trades board would come in to play?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. They're there to review codes, as we'll be coming to you guys here real soon. They're there to also review interpretations. So, if it's a code change, which this probably would be, some guidelines of how they'd want it enforced, whether they fill it some interpretation or an actual code item, we'd probably bring it back to you for approval on, depending on how soon we get it through the application. But we're bringing codes in January, so it'd be a good time at that point to address this as well.
Is Tom accurate in the reasoning behind this particular code language? It's a safety feature, having somebody stamp approval?
Yeah, so, I've got some papers. I don't know if you want them, if this is a full discussion or what all you want right now. But a sign application came across that had very poor description of what the structural stability, footings, design would be. And that's what sparked, what have we been doing? What should we be doing? And where are we missing the mark on this? Because what was submitted should not be accepted in any city. So, that sparked the discussion. We met with myself and Ryan Vitlock to discuss parameters of how this should work, of what we were comfortable with. We sent on an email or a letter, I think Aaron did, to the sign companies to express, hey, here's a new thing, if you will, this is what we're going to be expecting. What we came up with, just so you do know, is a four-to-eight-foot sign, or of any kind freestanding sign, can be installed with no engineered drawings, as long as the fall zone, which is perpendicular to the length of the sign, is met. So, if it's eight foot, you've got eight-foot fall zone. Either way, that's not going to impact pedestrian, motorway, you know, some kind of public way. Anything over that would require stamped engineered drawings. If you didn't have the fall zone of those four-to-eight-foot signs, then that's when engineered drawings would negate having to have a fall zone requirement. That was our direction, our focus on it, is where would a sign fall? How do we know the sign is structurally safe, being installed and designed properly? And it's not taking into account, you know, this company specifically, it's any company. So, imagine what applications we may receive from companies that might not be as well-tuned and maybe well-designed as their signs. You know, it's one for all kind of a thing. It meets all of it.
Trent, is it safe to say that the majority of signs constructed in that range currently in Hutchinson don't have an engineered stamp?
I went back through just the last two years because this is a quick thing. We received the application, we knew there was an issue, so I went through 2018 and 2019 signs. We only had a couple that were considered a freestanding pole-type of sign, and they were both engineered, but that could have been just by who did them. Luminous, as well, as mentioned, if they order a sign in through another national manufacturer, all their signs come engineered. So, the signs that we had could have been just by coincidence that they, whoever bought them, however they came in, were going to come engineered, no matter what.
Our sign tragedy is pretty, pretty common, like signs falling. I'm thinking risk, kind of risk analysis, risk management.
We've had just one sign recently that I know of that fell, and that was the Autozone. We've had some canopies that have fallen, but as far as signs, Autozone's probably the only one I know, other than the inserts, which when we had our hailstorm and the bad wind, Village Inn and stuff, but you can't prevent that with the insert, so...
If I could go back in time a little bit, Tom, I forget the time sequence when we recently adopted the last sign code. But I know we spent a great deal of time with your folks in a subcommittee. Steve and I were part of a discussion with the planning department and your folks and other sign companies, to find middle grounds on a lot of different areas because there was, there were some gaps in the original language. And I think we did a pretty darn good job, all of us, in ultimately coming up with the final product. Was this engineering plan language, was that in the recently adopted, or was it added as part of the regulations and the fee schedule? How did that all unfold?
It, I haven't reviewed it with that in respect. I don't believe it's anywhere in it, John. And I'm going to butcher unintentionally. I believe the requirements that Trent is working with are in the Uniform Building Code, and I'm sure they're adopted by the, is that correct?
Looks like Ryan might have some insight as well.
It may refer to them, it may refer to them in reference. My guess is, Ryan will show that. Did we discuss it? Was it considered? Absolutely not. And so...
At the time of the adoption of the revised ordinance, this was not an item of discussion?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I'm trying to pull that up.
I may just, I have a few thoughts. I think absolutely the Building Trades Board, that's exactly why that group was put together to consider codes that are overly burdensome and hear from people who, you know, wanted to appeal decisions of perhaps our buildings, building official. However, what they are going to do is give us a recommendation, and then that'll come back before us. And so, it's, I think that board was put together to ease regulation and to ease burdens, and I don't want it to be one more hurdle that you have to jump through. So, if we could agree as a body that it doesn't make sense, because they're just going to give us a recommendation probably that it doesn't make sense, it's just going to add another month or so to this, then I would be in favor of striking that particular...
But that certainly sets a precedent for any and every variation. I mean...
And that's a precedent I would be okay to set because I think we don't have the luxury to, to have a regulatory environment that's overly burdensome when we're not experiencing the growth we want to see. I'm not saying that we need to strike a bunch of fire codes and basic safety codes, but everything is about risk management. You know, I spoke with a business owner the other day who said, you know, you can get in your car and get in an accident, so do not get in your car. And I think we're trying to, we're working too hard to make sure nothing bad happens that nothing happens, like nobody, I don't want to say nobody wants to do business, but I think we're making it a little bit difficult when we don't need to be.
Kind of one of the comments that Nancy made, I'm certainly open maybe to a suggestion Tom made about suspending. But I certainly wouldn't be willing to take a final action without involving folks who are involved in trades and deal with codes across a variety of different trades. So, again, a suspension would be one thing, but I certainly wouldn't favor out and out reversing or whatever the action that's begun until we've had a recommendation to do that or maybe not, or to keep it imposed from the body that we established to do the...
That's fair.
Do you all have some recommendations at this point?
No. And I made John aware I was going to come visit today. After Trent and I visited, we're really in totally different places, and with us not being required to do this in other municipalities for like work, I couldn't figure out a middle ground. Where risk occurs most in our... Where risk occurs most in our industry, and I'll only speak to my experience of 29 years, is really above 20 feet, 25 feet of structural height and more. Bad things can happen at seven feet tall, absolutely. It's the way wind loads are calculated, it's pretty low risk. But when we get up in the air is when wind is the force of nature. And it seems like to me that that's where making sure people who are doing things that high and higher know what they're doing and so forth. And the other information we got informally from other cities is if we don't like it, what we see, we just require it. If we don't trust that these people know what they're doing, we just go make them buy insurance, so to speak. That's hard to do. That's a gut reaction. And so it was a comment that if I were in trench shoes, I said, oh, that's a slippery slope. So that's hard, too. But where we see most of the risk is in high-rise structures and getting over 20 feet. Some of the engineering we paid for was voluntary. There were 50 and 60-foot structures along highways, and we paid for that ourselves without the municipality requiring it, just to check our math. We've got risk and financial liability on the line, too. So we certainly do that ourselves now, but that cannot make a rule. I understand that, so.
I was just going to state that, you know, this came, as far as your discussion goes, you know, I wasn't in any of those meetings, structural stability never came up. He's correct on that. That doesn't mean it shouldn't. To your case in point of being over-restrictive, yeah, my job is life safety, and one of the signs that recently they're developing is directly back of the sidewalk, and it's 20-something-plus feet in height. And to me, on that type of a sign, my own personal opinion is the $300 or the $500 total to engineer it is well worth the investment, knowing that it has been designed for that installation. And to just say that the $500 is too much on a customer, when the sign is a custom sign anyway, it's going to get built, and if you've got to add a week or two. Just so you know my stance, yes, did I come up with what you had before you? Absolutely. But was it to just add more restrictions and more government control? No, it's trying to put some common sense approach to it, and should we look at things that could affect the cars or the people walking? And I think you should. And the other cities I reached out, I got five responses back. They all said, yes, they do. And I think it is a miscommunication between multiple departments not communicating, where one department feels that, yes, we require stamped engineered drawings on all freestanding signs, is what the response I got from Dodge, Hayes, Lawrence, Concordia, and I don't know what the fifth city was. And then you talk to the planning department, or as John reached out to city managers, you get a mixed answer. So, but does that mean that we do something totally different, or we fall in line? No, you guys need to decide what's right for Hutch, and if you don't care, then you don't care, and you rule either way. I think the building trade boards, as you mentioned, they might come back with a recommendation, but you guys set committees up for a purpose. You put these people on that you felt were experts in their field of construction, and so it's not just like you're sending it out to morning coffee people that have no idea of anything. You know, they should be educated people on that board, otherwise we shouldn't have that board.
Well, it seems to me, we've got a responsible, very experienced signing company that has the best intentions, but obviously is looking out for their operation. And Trent, you're certainly doing your job, I think, from the standpoint of life safety. So I would support suspending this requirement and potentially referring it back to this board, the Board of Trades as the next step, to see if there's a common ground. I don't know if there is.
If I may add one thing to that, just real quick, if we make any decision, even on suspension, the application in front of you in black and white, that's what sparked this. That is what sparked the discussion between our two departments of what have we been doing? What do we need to do? Where are we missing the gap on this? If you suspend it, it's not necessarily their signs that are very well-designed and engineered. It could be any company, such as what you have before you, that I would be required to accept the application and approve it. So you're opening the door by suspending it to potential issues of people that don't have well-thought design into the structure.
For a month, right, until the Building Trades Board comes in?
We'd get it on their next meeting, so depending on if they skip the Christmas time meeting next week, so.
When is their meeting supposed to be? I forgive me, I forget.
The fourth Tuesday of each month.
Fourth Tuesday.
Which is next week, Tuesday? Be next week.
I'm a little confused here. Tom, this is clearly not one of your products.
I haven't seen what you've been given, but I've been told it was by someone other than us.
This is clearly not one of your products. So you are speaking more in a broad, general term for suspending this rather than addressing this particular instance, right?
Well, yes.
Okay. I mean, you're looking at it from an industry perspective.
I'm confident that I would join Trent in being horrified by what you're looking at.
See, that's kind of where I'm coming. So that's why I'm reluctant to say suspend it, because then we have this that Trent is going to have to deal with. I know you're not going to turn in something like that, okay?
I might ask, if I can interrupt Nancy, do you have a project that's being held up because of this ordinance piece?
No, this entire project, this entire issue came to light when we had one. It's the rebranding of an insurance operation on 30th Street, and we had to get the sign-in manufacturing. We were given the new permit application. We had no choice, but to go through, we advised the customer, who was thrilled to hear about the additional expense. They were okay with it. Not all of our customers will be quite as inclined. But to meet the deadline of installation, we had to, we didn't have time to go visit about it. We had to go through the process, and so.
So this has already affected you?
Yes.
Tom, how big a sign was that, or is that, how tall?
25 to 30 feet tall. I did not bring that, I'm guessing, I think it's 25.
25.
I'm inclined to have the trades board look at it, and I heard you say something about them taking a break. I don't know what you require to get quorum at that meeting, but I would encourage them to be there, because this is exactly the reason that we put this board together. And we want to do it in a timely fashion, not, I understand we all have our breaks and stuff.
There's two parts, not break, the other fell the week of Thanksgiving.
I see.
And so we had nothing on the agenda, so they decided not to meet. This one here, where it's not actually, the project's already permitted, in my understanding, so I don't know, that's a holdup of any project. But if you request that you want an answer immediately back, then yeah, we can work with them to see if there's another date that they can meet to get an answer back. But the timely manner would be as if the application was in process right now, and they were waiting, then I could see that urgency with it. But that's not the case. But if you guys want something back quick, I'll reach out to the board and ask them, one, if they're going to meet on Christmas Eve, which I doubt they will, because it's a four.
Oh, it's Christmas Eve.
And then the next would be if we can meet yet this week, and that would be the solution, so.
Trent, what's this?
That's the application that sparked the discussion.
It sparked the discussion.
Right. And it's not from them, but that's what, you know, the rules are designed for everyone, not the perfect person that's doing everything right. It's the people that don't do things right, and you can't rely that companies like what you have in front of you are going to make the right decision all the time. Case in point, that application's a joke to me.
This one, yeah, absolutely.
And that's a true application that came, and planning it drew a red flag with them, so they come over and talk to me, and I said, no, we can't accept that. What have we been doing? Because we don't get pole signs or freestanding signs a whole lot, anyway. So I went back and reviewed the past two years of permits, and just by chance, they were both engineered plans, but like he's mentioned before, we probably haven't had that communication, which is probably the same throughout all communities of Kansas. He mentioned seven. The seven could be part of the 100-something signs he did, maybe there's another 20 that he did in the same communities, that those times they didn't require them. So I don't like the mixed batch of, he talks to me, he talks to someone else at the city, you get two different answers. That's why the letter I created was guidelines, so no matter who is looking at it, it's the same. And all those cities should be that way. I would imagine with the mixed answers we all received, myself, John, and Tom's crew, that they're all different, and it's because they all would react differently based on the application.
Well, it just seems like a new interpretation of a set of codes we passed like a couple years ago, so that's where I stand on it.
The only other piece of information I'll share on this is there are a few municipalities that require our staff to pass extremely rigorous tests to be licensed sign installers. Sillina and Kansas City, Missouri are the two that come to mind. And that is an onerous test. Unfortunately, we have staff that pass those, and they deal with all kinds of weird things. It is really a buildings in construction, and I mean, do a signs. It's not a sign test. We just have to pass it.
And if you pass that, then that shows that you have a certain quality.
You have a certain quality, and I cannot believe I'm standing before a public body espousing the virtues of this, because it is a very, very difficult process. But it does set those who can pass to a different standard than others. And sign-hanger licensing is 50 bucks in a bond, and it's typically, for most municipalities, not a threshold. Anybody can get it, but perhaps there's a professional method to address this, to give latitude to staff that, okay, well, if they don't have that, then not impossible that somebody could pass the test and still try to put junk in the front yard. It's not impossible, but less likely, perhaps.
Right. I would be inclined to see if we could get it before the Building Trades Board. Ideally, if we could call a special meeting, if you can get a quorum. I've spoken with some of these individuals that are on this board, they're chomping at the bit for something to have on the agenda, to look at, and so this would be an opportunity to test the code and the process and the review process. Is that, will you be able to reach out to them and see if you can get a collection of them to find a date? Then I assume you'll communicate that date to Mr. Sellers? Will that work?
I appreciate the consideration.
I think timeline is certainly an issue here.
At the same time, just listening to the discussion, it's not a simple thing, so I would, I don't want to say this, don't rush it just for the sake of getting it back in a short time. I think Tom's raised some things. I mean, there's, it's worth having some discussion. I would hope, though, that they would expeditiously move on it, but not rush.
The quicker we start the discussion, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're.
The fact that we have no permit applications in today do not mean we will not have permit applications in tomorrow. We're not suspending our process of trying to sell things to businesses and operations that want them. So I don't know, frankly, I haven't pulled the staff on when the next one coming through, whether it'll be applicable to this or not. We also get signed permits for things not involved in this specific issue, so. And I'm just asking a question, is, are we going to try to convene that without changing the rules, or are we going to suspend the rules until we come back to the body with a resolution or a suggestion?
Personally, I want to convene it without suspending the rules at this point in time. I don't think it'll take that long.
The conversation should be able to start, I mean, again, immediately. So I would be inclined with.
I think we have direction, we'll take it to the Board of Building Trades and bring it back.
Bring it back.
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any others that want to approach the council, something that's not on the agenda? This would be the time to do so. Sir? Do you give your name and your address, please?
Good morning. My name is Gene McVeigh, 13 Swerens. It's been a while since I've been here, so you all must be doing a good job. There you go. Last week, or last time you had a meeting, it was mentioned that Evergy is going to give you a $60,000 windfall, is that correct?
Well, they had purchased them right away from the city, and so, yes.
And that the Parks Director wanted to update Harsha Park. And put in a soccer field. The ball diamond there is used during the summer for all types of rec teams, softball, girls, boys, T-ball, and it's used quite often. There's, he's wanting to put in benches and, I don't, covers of some type, I think. Six tenths of a mile away, there's a park with plenty of shade trees, a shelter that for some reason has been fenced off. And the playground equipment's been fenced off for over a year and a half. I hated to correct him on that. And so it doesn't get used anymore. And my question is, for one thing, how come that shelter's been fenced off? Is there structure problems? I don't know, I've never heard why it was fenced off.
I think there are some things, I don't know the specifics of either, but I'd be more willing to find out and get back with you on that.
Okay. But it's just, it seems to me like that would be a more good use for the money, because that park is family-friendly, community-friendly, all the time. I mean, in the summer or spring, fall, not very often, you can't go by there in the evenings and see families under the shelter or the kids playing, and it hasn't happened now for over a year and a half.
Is that Herman Bunty Park?
No, it's one just outside of Rice.
Oh, yeah, just the one south of Rice.
Along the bike trail.
The only bad thing about it, it lost a big tree this year, but it was off to the side anyway, so. But it does, it has shade trees. The Harsha Park, it has some trees, but they're not shade trees. And people go out there and hit golf balls, and I don't know if the soccer players are going to want that.
Well, and I'll tell you, too, the soccer field was just offered as a suggestion.
I understand.
And that's not, nothing's set in stone. As a matter of fact, you're marking that money specifically for something in there isn't 100% at this point either. It's been, it's a continuing conversation, and for the reasons you described, it's a very unprogrammed park, there's not a whole lot going on. I ride my bike, I go right on mine, there's no reason to stop. But they're looking at opportunities, if it makes sense.
But you've got to agree with me, though, that whenever you go by there in the evenings in the summer, there's, there are plenty of activities.
Oh, absolutely. You see the cars that park up on the grassy area there and so on, yeah.
And, you know, the backstop's been there for years, because.
I utilized it when I used to play soccer.
I ran into it when I was 16 years old.
Oh, boy.
And that was a long time ago. Okay, so we got through that, and I remember when I was here last, which was several years ago, he wanted to tear up the tennis courts at Rice Park. And it didn't happen, and I'm proud of myself. I think maybe I got that done. The water park did get put in, and it gets used quite often. The tennis courts still get used in the evenings, and at 10 o'clock at night when they're down there, and the basketball courts, everything's lit up, so, you know, I'm glad that happened.
Absolutely. We would agree.
And now, here comes a rub between me and Mr. Jim. I didn't know about it until I read in the paper the other day that the state, and don't get me wrong, I think we need a good hotel-motel convention center, because we have a problem with people not wanting to stay in the one we have. But my rub is, do we need that at 20th and Main? I don't believe we do. There's a lot of parking lots on Plum Street. If the fair wants to put it in, there's a parking lot on the north side.
I'll add to that, too. The conversation about the convention center's ongoing, too. There's nothing set in stone there either. But I appreciate your suggestion.
But, you know, if the city is wanting to update their fire station, which I don't have any problem with, it makes sense to me, let the state move their fence so they can bring a driveway in and bring them to the back. Oh, yeah, it's going to take some construction to put indoors and whatnot, because I under, you know, I live over in the 11th Street area. They go around the fire station and come in. Makes a lot of sense, rather than shut down traffic on Main Street and back them in. But, I mean, that's the way they used to do it, the old one at 6th and Main, they had to back it in. But if that's a rub. But if that's a rub, I mean, move your fence, let us have a driveway to come through the back. But I still don't believe we
Yeah. And that's a conversation, yeah, that will, as they approach getting what they want to do with that fire station, definitely have to have conversations with the State of Kansas and the State Fair Board.
I understand that. But I'm just, you know, well, just making my feelings. Like I said, it's been a while since I've been here.
Well, welcome back. We appreciate you. Anytime you have public input, you know, that's a great way. And you don't have to wait for meetings. You can shoot us an email. You can catch us on the phone or whatever. But we do appreciate when you take the time to come down.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene.
Any others? Lucky's standing up?
No.
Okay.
Not interested.
Very good. Next item, if you would, please.
Item six, consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
It's moved in second. Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzke.
Yes. Next item.
And we will be moving the first item of new business up. So 8A, consider amendment to contract with Waste Connections of Kansas.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. And coming up to the podium is Herschel West with Waste Connections of Kansas. You may remember that he appeared sometime recently regarding some changes to the contract, the city's contract with Waste Connections, to extend the term and to change the fee structure. Now, we have brought those before you. And the proposed amendment to the, to the contract, it's noted as a Second Amendment. There was a little First Amendment on there that changed the recycling program from recycle bank to recycle rewards before. And that's why this is the Second Amendment. And that First Amendment will go away altogether as a, as a part of this. I won't cover every change with you, but I will hit the, the major ones. And primarily, it's extending the term of the contract to 2029. So essentially, we've got another 10 years. We have three years existing on the existing contract and another seven beyond that. So the extension is for an additional seven years beyond our, our recent contract. And then the rates and charges are actually reduced, 950 per month. And we're getting away from the Consumer Price Index to just a flat percentage. That created some confusion with the contract, because one year, the Consumer Price Index went down. And so the question was, where does it go up from there? Does it go for, up from the down Consumer Price Index? Or does it go from where we were the previous year? And so we had those discussions. And this takes that all the way. Makes it nice and easy, 2%. We can do that math. The, there have been some specific charges included in here, some fees for heavy and bulky items. Some of those changes are about on the heavy and bulky items. It really added some requirements with CFCs and HCFCs. Don't ask me what those stand for. I just say free on. But they have to be certified by refrigeration technician to see that some of those things are removed. And we established set fees for those of $15. Some provisions about non-payment by customers, a fee for picking up the cart and then returning it for, for non-payment. The compensation has been changed. And you'll see that in the next item, which is actually the, the rate resolution for this next year for all categories. It deletes the recycling bank program, this recycling rewards program. I'll let Herschel talk about that. I know it was not really effective, not well-used. And so the amendment proposes doing away with that. The fuel adjustments that are in there, get away from the Consumer Price Index also, and just, just stick with increases related to percentages. I'm not sure we've ever gotten to those, those fuel adjustments. I don't think the, the cost of diesel got high enough that it, that it ever came into play. And then finally, some of the things to do with recycling, to, to address, to address a concern with the contamination of it. Because, and again, I'll let Herschel answer those questions. But if you contaminate the recycling, it's trash. If that polycart gets in with all the others in the truck, it's all trash. So it's a real problem for them. So we've added some provisions about that, about the discretion not to pick it up. And if it's picked up, it's got to be trash. Missed stops, the same way, there's a fee for that. And then the others were really just updates, parties to be contacted, the rates and charges, the exhibit B on the dumpster service. It was just an update of where they are, the size of the containers, and, and much of that. And I'll answer any questions that you have. But I suspect that your specific questions will be for Herschel.
Paul, I did have
Welcome.
I did have a question in regards to the, the contamination of recycling. I, I don't know how the new language that we see in front of us compares to the old. What, what does it do? Is it basically that the contractor can not pick up a recycling cart when it's identified as a contaminated cart?
Correct.
Yes. As they abuse it. We'll give them a couple of warnings.
Okay.
And we'll put a sticker on there to let them know they, we're seeing contamination in your cart. This is your first warning. This is your second warning. The third warning would be, I think that we would not dump the cart. How do you recognize that?
Yeah, how do you recognize it?
Somebody have to get off the truck? Yeah. It'd be something that the driver will see. I mean, I know it's automated. But it's usually the customers that are contaminated are the ones that do it all the time. So once they see it once from a person, from a customer, then maybe keep an eye on it a little bit more. And if they continue to see it, that's when we'll give them a notice.
Yeah. When you see a great big plastic bag sticking out of the top of a brown cart, you know they've thrown stuff in there they're not supposed to.
A tree limb. I mean, people sometimes just don't
Yes. Food waste.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty obvious. So, so this essentially, I guess, allows probably what you've been doing by practice. Am I correct?
A little bit. We started here in the last six months, maybe.
But it's been a practice rather than something that, because basically by contract, you are required to pick those up. And this, and I think there's a sentence in here says, you wouldn't be in breach of contract if you don't pick it up because of contamination. And so that's, that's what's allowed by this new language?
Yes. And it's a legitimate problem for
Oh, I know it is.
For our contract.
I don't disagree with, with finding a way to protect the contractor from picking up contaminated recycled material. I assume what you do at some point in time is come back with and, and put that in the regular trash truck.
Yes. We do landfill. If, if the load is contaminated where it's not worth, then we do landfill some of the loads. That happens very often, but it can happen.
Okay.
Did Paul give a pretty good summation? Is there anything you wanted to add to what we went through? Not really. I know we talked about the, the reward program going away. There's 11, little over 11,000 customers here in the Hutch and Beulie area. And we had a report sent to us about three or four months ago, three months ago, that only less than 1% of the customers are using it. And that's a, that's a program that we are, we have to pay for. And if nobody's using it, you know, for us to keep the costs down, and to you guys, it's probably better just to, to go away.
Okay. The only question I had, and it may be in here, and I just couldn't find it. When we do the spring cleanup days, are you still going to supply the dumpsters?
Yeah. Nothing has changed with the spring cleanup.
These, these are the, only the amendments. That provision is in the original contract and is not going away.
I thought it was. Okay. Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
I've got one other question, at least at this time. Given the 2%, in the, at the end of this contract period, where will the rate be compared to where it's starting at? I think this goes into the next item, am I right?
Yeah.
It'd be 10, 1020. $10, 1020. I, I think we saw those numbers a month or two ago. Actually, it's 10. 2021, it'd be 1020.
And it was a
So it won't be
immediate decrease over what they're paying.
So at the end of this contract period, it'll be no higher than what it is now?
Be pretty close.
Or, or close to it, or real close to it. Yeah.
Yeah. In our projections, it takes it out to 2027 with the 2% to get back to what
To where we are now. Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious as to, to, and I've never heard that number. What the, are they 5% franchise fee? How much that generates annually?
Oh.
I'm just curious. See if I can look that up real quick. If you want to go on, I'll get that.
I would say like 250,000.
300, maybe.
Like 250,000.
Okay. Yeah. I've never seen or heard that number. So
Yeah, I get that.
It was one of our funds that we had some
Yeah.
excess in that.
About 200,000.
200,000.
Yeah.
Any other questions of Herschel or of staff? Is there a motion to consider the amendments?
I move to approve the Second Amendment to contract number 2011 C216 for garbage and refuse collection and disposal on related services and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzke.
Yes. Next item, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. America, and I just want to make a comment. Herschel, in, in, you know, the history of our situation with Stutzman has been really good working relationship going way back to John and Daryl and the whole group. And remember back in the 90s when we were one of the first communities to start the Blue Bag, you remember recycling programs? Jade, you were on some committee back then, I think.
The Green Team.
Yeah, the Green Team. And it's evolved into probably one of the best recycling programs in the state, single stream. We've got a facility here in town that collects it. And Stutzman's and now Waste Connections have just been really good partners to work with and the events, the community events that they help out with. So I really appreciate that, Herschel.
And anyway, we can help out in getting the message out. I know there's been some flyers, some other things describing how, how it's contaminating, how to avoid contamination. But anything you can think of that we can help facilitate to do that? Yeah. I don't think else is more.
We're working on saying Rebecca's done some things, social media.
It's education, like anything, getting folks to know.
I'm not sure that gets to everybody, like Councilman Dave Line, but, you know, social media feeds.
Oh, social media.
Oh, yeah.
All-consuming.
He was just tweeting a moment ago. I caught him. No. Very good. Thank you, Herschel. Have a great day. Merry Christmas.
Oh, tweet.
Right. Okay. And I'm sorry, we interrupted. Linda, did you actually list the
Yep. And now back to item 7A.
Thank you.
Consider resolution establishing rates and charges for the collection and disposal of garbage and trash.
Hey, Angela Richard, Director of Finance. This is the resolution that would actually establish the fees that we have agreed upon in the contract that you just approved. So residential service will go from 1152 to 950, commercial from 1227 to 1025. The additional recycle cart will go up $2 to $4. And then you can see the handicap carryout service fees that are in the memo. We did add a couple of things just to clarify in the resolution. We added the missed cart pickup fee will be $15. And then the fees for non-payment and having your cart redelivered. So those are added this year. And we're just presenting the 2020 rates. But after this, we'll present the 2% rate increase every year until the end of the contract. So are there any questions?
Any questions?
What is the current missed cart?
That is what we currently are charging. I think they might have charged $8 before, but it was never established in the contract or the resolution. So here we're just
Establishing it.
Establishing it. Yes.
I must be a cheapskate. I just mash it down and hope I can make it to next week.
That is an option.
I've actually put a child in. Jump, jump. Okay. Any other questions of Angela or any other questions? If not a motion?
I would move to approve resolution establishing rates and charges and franchise fees for collection and disposal of garbage and trash by the city. All is authorized by Section 10-209-10-210 of the Hutchinson City Code and authorized the mayor to sign.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckent.
Yes.
Dave Line.
Yes.
Soldner.
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo.
Yes.
Inzke.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8B, consider agreement for Obie Road landfill superfund site and fourth and carry site.
Morning. Brian Clinton, Director of Public Works. All right. The map up on the TV screen shows you the location of the Obie Road landfill superfund site. It is on the airport property. And it's east half, east half of the airport property. And you can see right in this location is where the old Hutchinson landfill used to be. Pollution was discovered in 1985. And the remedial action for this site was to keep, one, keep people off the site, two, not disturb the site, and three, to monitor the groundwater for contamination. The monitoring program that has been required since 2018 includes sampling 13 monitoring wells and seven domestic wells for arsenic on a yearly basis and volatile organic compounds every five years. And those monitoring wells have the red lettering below them. And the domestic wells that we're sampling have the blue lettering below them. So in 2019, two of the 13 monitoring wells and two of the seven domestic wells exceeded the maximum contaminant level for arsenic. And the property owners for those two domestic wells have since been hooked up to the rural water district water line out in that area. So in 2020, we will monitor again for arsenic only. And the other thing that's happening in 2020 is KDHE and AP, and the EPA will conduct their five-year review of this site just to make sure that the remedies that are in place are protecting human health and also the environment. And with that, are there any questions? For the Obie Road site, I've got another one to talk about as well.
This is an annual contract?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I've asked this question, and I think I know what the answer is, is, but isn't there any legal way that we could enter into a multi-year agreement since this is repeated annually with Burns McDonald?
I think
I think that's a problem with the cash basis law.
Okay. And I think you have asked the question. I think that is the answer we get every year and I forget each time. If that's correct.
Even, well, I don't want to, I don't want to, certainly, I don't want to disagree with, with council. But we just signed some form of an agreement with
With Stutzman for 10 years.
With Waste Management Group for a 10-year agreement. What's the difference?
Revenue coming in versus the fact that we're paying it all. I mean, that's based on people paying their bills.
People paying their bills.
I mean, I don't know if that has anything to
I would venture, I don't want to argue with our city attorney, but I would think we could enter into a multi-year agreement, but
Contention upon funding availability or
But typically, on engineering services, we've, you know, we, and Burns McDonald will probably be doing this until eternity. And I don't know that they would be interested in a multi-year deal based on cost and not knowing what that is. But, you know, it's something we can certainly look into after this.
I don't know how much staff time is involved in this, but I suspect quite a bit. I suppose in reviewing
There, there is some staff time, absolutely. Reviewing the scope and
Whether or not, we can streamline it. That's all I'm asking.
Well, in, in what we end up doing, I do it all the time on contracts. We had another clause that says, this will be interpreted according to the cash basis and budgeting laws of the State of Kansas.
So we, so I think we could, if that is the direction you wanted to go with that.
Brian, what's your thoughts on that? Is that something you'd be prefer, that'd be preferable to you?
Well, I think it's not the same every year, though. In some cases, it's like every five years, we have to sample the VOCs as well as arsenic. And so those years are more expensive because there's more samples. But we know what those years are, and we could look at, at budgeting.
Well, that's it. Just because those are outliers, you can negotiate the contract.
Right.
So it, it would even out or average out, if you will, if it burns McDonald. That's the key, is if Burns McDonald's willing to do it as well. And they may like the advantage of being able to negotiate.
I mean, it's a professional decision on your part. I'm certainly not wanting to interfere with your operation. I just asked the question again, so.
Sure.
I think if, if the scope of work changes based on, you know, what they find, then costs are different. And you just, we could just negotiate that. But, which is what we've been doing. But
Yeah. I guess we could put a feeler out to Burns McDonald, the folks that you talk to. Do they ever entertain multi-year contracts? What do those look like?
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind.
I'm happy to do that.
Sure. Yeah. I don't want to interfere. I just raised the question again, so.
Yeah.
You're not getting tired of hearing me talk?
No, 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 no.
Enough. Once a year, Brian, already.
The reminder tends to come in handy. But I, and I think I've raised this before as well. And I know Burns McDonald's been doing this a fine job. It's just, when, when was the last time we had any competitive bid for, for this?
Well, probably three or four years ago, we were using CDM
Okay.
to do this work. And then they had quite a bit of staff turnover and lost the folks that were familiar with this site. And so we asked Burns and McDonald to prepare scope and fee. And one of the main reasons is they're working with Textron, who is responsible for the other portion of the Obie Road superfund site. And one of the main reasons is they're working with Textron, who is responsible for the other portion of the Obie Road superfund site. They're dealing with the trichlorethylene cleanup. And so they're sampling at the same time for Textron as they are for us now. So there is some cost savings.
Some efficiencies.
Some efficiencies by having that same consultant work for us as they're working for Textron. So that's the main reason why we contacted Burns and McDonald. Another thing is, they do have a lot of history, especially on their Obie Roads site. CDM had been working on the Fourth and Carry site. So that history of knowing where those monitoring wells are, having their report pretty well set up, and understanding what KDHE's looking for, I think has been beneficial, so.
Are they really a sole source provider, though?
They have been for the last probably four years, yes. We haven't asked for any other proposals to do this type of work.
Well, the question is, might we be able to get the same level quality of work if we asked for other proposals or asked if there were others interested in proposing?
Yeah, and typically, I don't bid out engineering services. It's looking for, you're hiring what have tended to be the most qualified firms to do the work, rather than the lowest bid to do the work. Because you're really asking for ideas and knowledge. And so sometimes you do get what you pay for when you go with the low bid.
And I'm not suggesting that we bid it out just so we can take the lowest.
Right.
It just seems to me that.
There was probably a burning curve between CDM and Burns and McDonald.
There was a little bit that first year.
First year, was there?
For Burns and McDonald?
For Burns and McDonald, just again, to get familiar with the sites. And, you know, we've got the ongoing treatment now at Fourth and Carry that Burns and McDonald for the source area remediation that will start this spring, which is a separate project from just the monitoring and the sampling. And I'm not sure that I would want to separate out those two from Burns and McDonald.
Yep. Very good.
Something to set for history.
Fourth and Carry, I believe.
Fourth and Carry. Okay, so again, this is a map showing you the location of the Fourth and Carry groundwater contamination. Kind of just to orient everybody, near Fourth and Halsted, you can see those two major streets. The red lines on that map show the historic groundwater contamination plumes. And the yellow or orangey shaded in area are the current plumes of contamination that we're dealing with at that particular site. So again, just a little bit of the history. Pollution was discovered in the early 1980s at a city well located at Fourth and Carry. In 1994, the city signed the consent agreement with KDHE to clean up the groundwater contamination. The companies that were responsible for that contamination paid the city $10.5 million for that cleanup. We also formed a TIF district, a tax increment financing district, that contributed about $7 million over a 20-year period. That TIF district ended in 2014. Those monies were used for helping us clean up the site and also helping us monitor the site, pay for contracts like this with Burns and McDonald. Again, I just mentioned that one source area contamination that still needs to be cleaned up, and that is located right here. So that project will start in the spring of 2020. Also, just wanted to point out our remediation wells on this map. We've got five remediation wells that are located by these blue dots. And that forms a catcher's mitt to capture this groundwater contamination before it gets beyond G Avenue. So we're pumping out that contaminated groundwater and sending that to one of two places. Either the RO treatment plant so that we can treat it and beneficially reuse that contaminated water. Or the second spot, EW1 sends their contaminated water directly to our disposal wells. KDHE does require the semi-annual and annual groundwater monitoring report, basically just to ensure that the remedial activities are containing and removing the pollution. And city staff is recommending Burns and MAC for the required sampling and reporting due to their experience with both sites. And the proposed agreement with them is for $104,534. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
It goes without saying, then, the historical circle that's empty, circle's a bad word, but the shape in the middle, completely remediated?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, and we've actually even decommissioned this well right here. EW3 is no longer pumping. It's still there if something were to show up through our monitoring program, but it's not running right now.
I'm going to talk a little bit out of turn, but there was a conversation we had sometime within the last year, I think, with a group that was going to experiment with injecting something?
Yes.
Is that in this focus area as well?
That is, and that's that source area here at the Farmland J or the ADM elevator.
Has that process started?
We'll begin that this spring.
This spring.
Yep, in 2020, and we'll be injecting a media down in there to help facilitate some of the bugs eating.
Right. I'm curious to see if that, because I remember them saying it was just going to be a test, but they don't know the outcome. It could help remediate it a lot or a little or.
Exactly, yeah. Hopefully, the pilot study is good and we can walk away. But there's a chance that we may have to add some additional treatments in that area.
Very good, thank you.
What are you going to have to do to remediate the larger plume?
Okay, yeah, this one down here.
Uh huh.
This is in the deeper groundwater, so there's no source area that's been identified that's contributing more contamination to the groundwater. So that's really just a pump and treat. So we're pumping out that groundwater through EW1 and EW2 and sending that either to the RO plant or the disposal well. Yeah, and that's a long-term project.
Okay, so it's going to be years before that?
It will be. I looked on the map, and I think it was around 800 parts per billion is what we're still seeing in contamination in this plume. Worst, the worst spot, the maximum contaminant level is five. So there's quite a bit of work yet to do.
It's decreasing, though, isn't it, the plume? It's kind of shifting.
I was going to say, it's moving.
I haven't seen a whole lot of decreasing in that, and the numbers jump. It's amazing when you look over the last five years, you know, one year they're high, the next year they're low, the next year they're up a little bit, so.
Is that pilot program going to participate in that plume as well?
No, no. This plume's already in the groundwater.
Is there any noticeable plume movement south of Avenue G?
No, there hasn't been.
It has been contained.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, based on, again, our sampling and monitoring wells.
Yeah, okay. You don't have the monitoring wells pictured on there, do you?
I do not, no.
But they're pocketing that large plume that's still existing? And are there monitoring wells in the other areas that are being checked just to make sure that there's no re-emergence?
Yeah, yeah, there are. And as, another thing that we've been working with KDHE is to reduce the number of monitoring wells. You know, as this plume has shown that, or monitoring wells are showing no contamination, you know, we're delisting some of those and reducing a little bit of the cost over time.
Very good. Any other questions of Brian for a motion?
I would move to approve an agreement with Burns and McDonald for professional environmental services in an hourly, not to exceed contracting amount of $104,534. Parentheses, $48,650 for the Obie Road landfill site and $55,884 for the Fourth and Carry site, and authorized by Mayor DeSantis. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deckard?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Cyrus DeCarvalho?
Yes.
Yes. Next item, please.
Item 8C, consider legislative issues for 2020.
Mayor Council, before you, is a proposed legislative platform for your consideration. We typically, or annually, the council has approved a somewhat limited list of legislative priorities that we like to communicate with our elected officials prior to them heading to Topeka and while they're up in Topeka. And so I've just put together a draft of a few things. Some of those have been from past years. And again, this isn't everything. As you know, the League of Municipalities has a fairly lengthy legislative priority list that, as a city member of that, we've approved that as well. And it covers a lot more than these priorities. But I do know there's some communication I had with Councilman Dave Line, and I'll let him speak to that of something that he'd like to maybe add to this. But again, these are just a few of the priorities that we've presented. Doesn't mean that we can't talk about many, many other things as we meet with our legislators this week. So with that, I would stand for some questions. And Councilman Dave Line, if you want to address your issue, and we can talk about that.
Well, it comes as no surprise to speak a moment about transportation. I think you all know, we've been at the forefront, the city of Hutchinson, Reno County, and all of our partners in terms of being a strong advocate for continuation of a transportation program for Kansas. And we've had three of them thus far, 1989, 99, and 2009. And there's some remaining work to be done on the 2009 program called T-Works. And so I went back and I'd asked John to pull up the policy statement that we had adopted a year ago that we incorporated into our public policy. And I'll just read it to you here. Transportation restoration of funding. The city supports restoring KDOT funding and opposes any transfer of T-Works funds to balance the state's general fund. That's been a real issue, and that has deterred the delay of many, many, many projects, of which one has been the K96 Northwest Passage. That that project has been delayed. It was scheduled to be let back in 2016. But because the state legislature opted to borrow monies from KDOT, that project has been delayed. There is some optimism in the future that if the legislature would choose, and last year was the beginning of them not continuing to want to raid the KDOT funds, that this K96 Sterling project would be one that would be funded. And there's 24 delayed T-Works projects, and that would be one of them. That if the funding is sustained, we could see that project being let here. Don't quote me on this exactly, but fiscal year '22 or fiscal year '23. So we would be optimistic that we would finally get that project underway. So that deals with T-Works. And then the other pieces that we had written in the policy agenda or the policy item was the city-county highway fund is essential to maintaining local roads and should be fully funded. The city supports increasing the amount of state funding which supports the city connecting link improvement program. And that actually, I believe, did occur last year based on some recommendations that the Transportation Task Force had included. So we have benefited from that. And then the final piece is the city also supports continuation of the federal funds exchange program at its current rate of 90 cents to the local entity for each $1 in federal funds. And I think that represents almost $500,000, $400,000 of funding that had been reduced down to as low as 75 cents, and it was reinstated back to 90 cents. So that's the essence of the policy that we had the last two years, and I would ask that we incorporate that into our public policy for 2020.
Yeah, I mean, what's in the agenda of this, or this does include that?
Oh, okay, well, I didn't see that.
Well, no, the agenda didn't add that. I just wanted you to see that. And the one question I would have on that, you know, in what you're reading there, it says the city supports restoring KDOT funding and opposes any transfer. And I'm a little unsure about the word restore, but another way to say it is city supports full funding of the Kansas comprehensive transportation program. Oppose any use of these funds to balance states. It may be a little more direct than, you know, restoring KDOT funding, because I'm not, you know, I guess I'm not clear if they've actually restored it. You know, I think they have, but to a degree. So it says the same thing, I think, but maybe not getting into the word restore, but that's entirely up to y'all, but.
Quick, just add the word full funding.
Yeah, city supports full funding of the Kansas comprehensive transportation program, period. We oppose any use of these funds to balance the state's general fund. It's replacing, that will be replaced, that first sentence of what you have in front of you. It says kind of the same thing.
Sure.
It really does.
Stay away from the bank of KDOT.
Yeah, you could just say that, yeah.
Can't borrow from the bank of KDOT anymore.
But I think you're right. I think that's important to add that into our agenda for this year.
Absolutely, yeah.
I had one I'm not, I don't have it written out. I think we may have mentioned it from time to time in passing here, but it strikes me that as often as I've heard it come up, especially among Housing Commission and in conversations about housing, excuse me, and that's the issue of land contracts, the state law that exists right now, or the very vague or loosely organized state law that I may be exaggerating some, but I think you could basically take the back of a paper napkin and handwrite out a land contract, and you're good to go. I know there's been conversations, as I mentioned, in Housing Commission about how it's used to get around some things by a property owner, by basically land contracting to someone. And they become responsible for maintenance. I think it's also a way for those folks that are unscrupulous to take advantage of people. I'm not terribly familiar with the Oklahoma law, but I've heard it mentioned as one that sets some good parameters. I'd like to see us support pursuing review and modification of the state of Kansas land contract laws such that there are elements that, or rewriting such that land contracts can continue, but that there are some elements that provide some framework of protection, not only for the seller, but to sell the buyer as well. And I think what lacks at this point in time, help me out a little bit, Jake, because I know you've got some knowledge, is that there's very little protection or framework from the buyer's end of things.
There's nothing that protects the equity of the buyer. There's nothing, there's not a statewide template. So again, there's no just loose form. And another thing is, when there are problems with insurance, like let's say there's a fire in the home, the owner of the property, which I would classify as a landlord, but the state law doesn't, can take the proceeds, but then requires the lesssee to make the improvements. I mean, there's just a lot, it's a very one-sided, the way it's written now. And I don't think it's, I just don't think there is really any regulation around it. This has come up a lot with landlords in town, too, who are, you know, under rental registration, they're required to meet a lot more stringent, you know, regulatory. Anyway, so it's, when we spoke with legislators about it, it was about two years ago, Steve and I met with the commission, Housing Commission and the legislators. They did look into some model legislation in other states. It doesn't seem to be a huge problem in other communities, which I think will make it challenging to get through the legislature. But I think since it is such a big problem in Hutchinson, and Amy Allison did pull the numbers for us on how many of those exist in Hutchinson, it's quite a few. Well, I mean, I don't think we have a really good idea because.
Isn't the lack of filing of a mortgage or.
Yeah, because there isn't any filing.
Yeah, but we had an idea that, I want to say a couple hundred. It seemed like a really high number. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up again, Steve, and I think it's something we should speak with them on, was it this week we're meeting?
Thursday. I don't know if all you could draft, not draft, I put a little something together. I didn't come with language such as John did with the transportation thing. And I'd be glad to, just from my own perspective, work with you on a half a dozen sentences or so, if there's some support.
I know Representative Probst has worked on some language.
I think, I mean, two years ago, you're right, we talked about that, and I'm not sure if a bill was introduced, never got a hearing, I mean, it ran into some. I mean, but I think it's certainly a conversation we can still have. If we want to put it in the plan, I think today would be appropriate to come up with some language so we can adopt it and be ready for Thursday. And I think you could approve adding the, if the council wants to, land contract issue and trust the city attorney to, and city manager to come up with some appropriate language. I think I review and modifications of land contracts which provide protection for tenants and landlords. I mean, we're not going to get into a whole lot of detail into that.
They'll have to draft the legislation.
Yeah.
We just want to bring to their attention that it's important to us as a community.
Yeah.
I'd be okay with you and the city attorney putting something together in regards.
It's already on there, but I think I would be remiss if I didn't bring it up, but the local ad valorem tax piece, the demand transfers. I think we as a body have to emphasize that to the legislators that are in the room that day, that if, especially with the tax lid situation. lid situation that has been put upon us, yet they're not meeting their obligations to the cities, Hutchinson included, by shirking their duties with regards to the local ad valorem tax. I think they need to be reminded of that, and see if we can get them off-center on that.
And I think there is some appetite this year for that.
Yeah, this recent tax council recommended to reinstate any local ad valorem tax, and I heard Senator Berger on a panel a couple of weeks ago on public television, and he spoke to it and indicated his desire to see if we can move this thing along. So, I think it's gained some interest and some support. And you...
Well, it's been, yeah, it's been 17 years, so...
So, you're not holding your breath?
The fiscal note in 99 for us was about $309,000 for that.
Which was about a mill.
But the other piece that, this doesn't talk to, but the other piece was the city-county revenue sharing, which was another chunk of change. We got three, I think, $340,000, $300,000 to $340,000 in that as well. But one of the things that we talked about at the league board meeting on Friday, the staff, the legislative staff cautioned us a little bit on this, that reinstating this is great, but there may be strings attached, and that might be a requirement to reduce the mill levy by that exact amount. So, I think we proposed this, but certainly we need to be aware of strings being attached to it, because if that's the case, it, I mean, you know what I'm saying, it helps the property, it does. But it doesn't really help your municipal budget much, but I think we just kind of be aware of that going forward. So, but, and I've heard the other side that it doesn't stand a chance of approval, but that's Topeka, you know. So, but it was a shock, as you mentioned, to see it come out of that tax council committee. That was pretty neat, so...
If they do attach those strings, once again, it's another opportunity for them to encroach upon home rule. So, hopefully that doesn't come to fruition.
And we're not, we're not changing the law here, we're just following the law, to start following the statute, and that's what we're doing. We haven't done for 17 years.
Anything else that we find that's missing, or want to add to the legislative issues that we want to present?
Just a comment on home rule, and John, maybe you know, but I, my understanding is the county is supporting or proposing that counties be brought into, having home rule authority.
I'm not one of that conversation, but, yeah.
I'd heard some discussion about that.
One of the things on home rule, and I think we did this last year, but, because people always ask, what have they done? Well, there's a list of there of what home rule infringement is, and there's probably more to this list that we could add. But, so, local election timing was the most, well, rental inspection for us was probably the most impactful, and then local election was the most recent change, I think, so...
I don't want to belabor this, but John, would you mind maybe bringing us up to date a little bit on where the state is in terms of their initiative on the internet sales tax collection and that Wayfair with the South Dakota and all of that, how that all plays out?
I don't really have a lot of detail. We didn't talk a lot about that at the board meeting. I think, you know, there's some information out there, or lack thereof, of what the impact really is, because, you know, when we talk about internet sales, we think that none of, we're not collecting any sales tax on the internet, but we are. You know, anything that's sold on Amazon that has a nexus in Kansas store or whatever, we're collecting sales tax. But there are independent vendors that sell via Amazon that live in Kentucky that we're not getting sales tax on. And to be able to equate that down to the impact here is pretty difficult to do, but I think there's good information out there that we should be probably seeing some changes there, and, you know, maybe get a little bit of information on what the impact really is. Because it's changed a lot since the original, you know, invention of internet sales and all of that, that we are collecting a good share of that because of their nexus or a location in Kansas, so...
John, could you expand the item that was added on the, to the bottom of the printed copy you sent us, the 2020 LKM Statement of Municipal Policy? Could you hang a little bit of information on that?
Well, as you know, as we go to the LAK, or the, each year, the league has a statement of policy, and it's a rather lengthy policy, and, you know, it's broken out into public safety, you know, water and environment, energy, utilities, just a whole assortment. And there's different committees that basically develop this legislative agenda for each one of those categories. And what I included in your pack, it was really kind of, we talked this sometime back, of really kind of having, you know, a handful of priorities for the given year, and plus all of this. And as a league board member, or league member, we support this statement. And so, it basically, you know, this is given to each of the legislators as well, that deals with all areas of municipal government. You know, we traditionally, this group, we don't talk a lot about utility issues, or energy, occasionally we do, but our focus seems to have been beyond, you know, home rule and tax issues, what have you. So...
The league, for example, is behind Medicaid expansion, if I read correctly. So, it'll help EMS, hospitals and such.
And there's a component on mental health, I think there that we didn't add, and no Jade. I know we talked about that, and, you know, that's certainly part of the league's legislative party, which, which means it's part of ours as well, as well.
My thought was, and it's a question to us, is, and here I wanted to add an item, but by throwing in the kitchen sinker, we watering down our five or six or seven that we want to target, it's not that I don't support the league municipal policy, but there's 40 or 50 items probably.
I think historically, we've tried to kind of have our own handful, and obviously, you guys have been through this process before, changing any of these is difficult, let alone, you know, this whole book. And a lot of these statements are basically, please just leave it, leave it alone. Leave us alone. We're fine.
Well, I think, I think there's value in hanging your hat on an organization. So, you know, if we don't put that in there, maybe we're supporting the Chamber of Commerce's, Kansas Chamber of Commerce's statement for that year. Every lobbying organization's going to have their own statement, and we need to show which one we're most closely aligned with. So, I kind of see why we do that. But, I mean, I respect what you're saying, that's a lot in there, but...
Should that say 2020 instead of 2019?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Oh, within that paragraph in the last one?
2020 statement.
Yeah, and I'm not championing that in a big way. It's kind of how it struck me.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we would add the language for the transportation issue that brought up, as well as language for land contracts, and if council would be willing to approve that with those amendments, and granted, you're not seeing them in writing, but...
Unless there's anything missing aside for that, and it sounded like everybody volunteered what they wanted, is there a motion to accept the changes that were presented?
I'll move to accept the city council legislative issues for 2020 as revised.
Yeah, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Deppen?
Yes.
Jade Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Iris St. Carvallo?
Yes.
Yes. Next item.
Item nine, report of city officials.
I'll start left, Jade.
Okay. Thank you so much. Well, first off, I just wanted to wish everybody a very merry Christmas. It's been an amazing year working with all of you, and it's been, you know, we've gotten through a lot of challenges with the budget, and it's just been, I think Hutchinson's really on an exciting track. And a big shout out to the staff who's done so much work this year. And I was really reflecting on it when I went to, I think I was at Walmart this weekend, and I saw the police department out collecting toys or food. And then, you know, I was driving roads yesterday, which I thought I was, it was not going to be a pleasant experience, and they were great. I mean, our crew, I don't know what time they got up in the morning, but it was phenomenal job by Public Works, and just every department's so critical to the functioning of the city. So, I wish you all a very joyful holiday season. And then, I wanted to bring up one other thing. I really hesitate to bring it up, because I don't want it to be interpreted as negative, or accusing, or embarrassing the staff in any way, but it's a concern of mine, as we go into a new year and a new decade, that I think we all need to be aware of and try to, try to maybe turn the tide on. And, you know, came up in council comments, we had an individual, Tom Sellers, speak about some of the difficulties he's had in doing business here. But, it must have been about two years ago that Mayor Dave Line authorized the formation of a task force to look at our regulatory environment and see if there are changes we could make to make Hutchinson a little bit more development friendly, maybe some blind areas we weren't, we weren't really noticing. You know, a lot of work was put into that. There were a lot of individuals who put in a lot of time to come up with a list of recommendations. And there's some cynics out there who said, I don't know why you're wasting your time with this, Jade, because nothing's going to change. And I didn't believe that at all. And I have a lot of faith in our ability to be flexible and responsive to the needs of the community as they come up. But, I, I haven't seen a whole lot of change. In that, I'm still getting a lot of feedback. And the reason I bring this up is because I've had three meetings since our last council meeting. I was reached out by a nonprofit, a small entrepreneur in downtown, a larger company that's doing a $45 million project here. And these are people who care deeply about Hutchinson. These are not cave people. They care deeply, and they're investing their money here, and they're going to be persistent and get the project done regardless of the barriers, because they love Hutchinson. So, it made me think about all these people who maybe want to invest here, and they don't care as much about the city, and they just put up their hands and leave. And I don't know how to calculate that. And I will mention, we can all recognize that when people have an awesome experience, they're probably not reaching out and asking for a two-hour meeting with me. So, I'm not saying that we're failing on all fronts, but one of the, one of the nonprofit is wanting to do an expansion to provide a service that has been needed for a couple decades here. Very exciting, been in the works for years. A little, more than a little bit hesitant to go through the process because of the experience they had at the last time they did an expansion project a few years ago. The small entrepreneur wanted to expand his business downtown, thought it would take a few weeks, he wasn't doing much, ended up taking, it's been three months and counting, had to get an engineer-stamped document on something that he never expected, which added several hundred dollars. And to a large business, that might not be a big deal, but to a small business, that can be like a killer, you know? And then the larger company that's going to provide 75 very well-paying jobs here, used the term horrific in explaining their experiences. Now, I took pages and pages of notes from all of these meetings, and I didn't want to, I don't want to trot them all out here. I guess I'm not sure exactly what I'm asking for, but I remember those recommendations. We're creating a culture of yes. I know some people kind of laughed about that. And what I mean by that is, maybe, maybe our codes aren't necessarily the problem. Maybe we just need to apply common sense to the codes. Are they a black and white thing? If they're a black and white thing, then yes. Maybe we need to do a better job at fully empowering the building trades board to start eliminating codes that need to be eliminated. And then, there's another recommendation I had, and it's lost, I should have taken notes before this. But I guess I'm just saying, as we embark on a new decade, that we take a stand for growth, and that everybody in this community and people who are interested in coming to this community know that Hutchinson is the community you invest in. And, again, I don't want to attack the staff, and I'm not real sure what I'm asking for, but I just know that if we're going to grow, we're going to have to start rolling out the red carpet and not the red tape. I don't question anybody's motives in doing the job that we gave them to do, but if we set the standard, or if we set the tone that we want them to do whatever they can to make a project work without additional barriers, I think things will change. I'm putting the onus on us, not on the staff. I'm not sure we're setting the tone for growth. So, that's what I wanted to say. I invite any kind of insights you might have. Maybe we don't want growth, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I was going to say, I'm all about growth and all the good things that become, or come from it, excuse me. I can't speak to the specifics of the one that you're talking about, but I know I've taken the same phone calls where individuals have done that. But I challenged those individuals, the ones that I spoke to, to not speak in generalities, that it was horrific, but rather give me details. Specificity goes a long way. And then get those people in touch with those individuals. I've had people calling for other people's jobs to be had. This will be a better city if we just got rid of XYZ. Why is that? And then when we challenged it and got down, and then when we got those individuals in the same room, sometimes the stories change. Not always, but sometimes those stories would change as well. So, I would challenge those individuals to go through yourself or others, to get with staff and have those conversations, so we can identify what made it such a horrific experience, and what, what specific changes can the city do to rectify that.
Well, you know, one of the, one of the comments that really shocked me was just the, what this individual referred to as a lack of friendliness. And, you know, I know, not everybody goes through their day with a smile on their face, but, you know, I think it'll go a long way in just approaching projects like, you know, we're rooting for you, we're excited you're here, and, you know, ah, this is a bummer, this is, this is how this has to work, but, you know, I'm going to help you through this process. I'll tell you, like, I'll give you one example. This is an industrial project. So, I think it's H3 designation, I don't know, John, you would know this more. That requires fire sprinkling, cart blanch. This particular room, made of complete metal, no combustibles, none, zero, had to be sprinkled to the tune of, I don't know, what is that, 60 grand? I'm not sure what the cost was. I wrote down a lot of numbers, but that was just one example. I did get specific examples. I'm just so excited. I'm really excited for our city, I'm really excited for this next decade, for our entrepreneur navigator position and downtown development, what's going on down there. But, you know, I just think we can see so much more if we put out that attitude of, you know, you want to build here, or you want to invest here, let's, let's make it happen. So, I won't belabor the point. I wanted you to all be aware of it. If you want more specifics, I'd be happy to share them with you. And I am encouraging each of those people to sit down with city manager and city staff and go over some of the experiences when their project's done, when they have time, so that we can maybe prevent, if anything's preventable, or explain a little bit better, detail our reasoning. But, I just want to open our doors wide for business, you know, and jobs, so...
Very good.
That's all I had.
Wonderful. Ask Steve?
I'll ditto the holiday and Christmas wishes that Jade expressed, and leave it at that.
Mr. Dayline?
I could probably spend the rest of the morning speaking to some of the items that you had identified. I guess my only comment, Jade, is, is that I think there's been an inherent perception for all too many years and decades that has carried through for a long, 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 long time. And we used to deal with it, I dealt with it for 35 years. And, but, on the, on the other side, on the flip side of it, there's example after example after example after example of successful projects and good experiences, that there's a balancing act with all that. I'm sure there's isolated issues that make it in the minds of this individual horrific. I have a difficult time understanding that it would be a horrific experience, based on all of the times that we have dealt with the city offices here. I've always felt we've had an incredibly progressive city manager and its staff and its department heads and so on. So, I think probably the approach is, is that how can we turn the tide on this thing, if that's our central theme? I read the summary of the, some of the respondents from the public opinion for our city manager position and so on. And, and there's a, there's a clear voice out there that people do support and want economic growth and jobs and investments and so on. So, I think the general population certainly share the views that we have as elected officials, and that we are not the enemy. This body, the city manager and his office, we are simply not the enemy. But there's those... his office, we are, we are simply not the enemy. But there's those, how we overcome those isolated situations is, is that to, to deal with them as specific as possible and develop a theme around economic growth and prosperity and, and build upon that, so.
Yeah.
And with that, I'll close and wish everybody a merry and a blessed Christmas.
Very good. Thank you. Nancy?
I'm going to stick to just have a very wonderful Christmas, New Year's, safe New Year's, and looking forward to twenty twenty.
Very good. Same thing, Merry Christmas to all, whoever happens to be watching. And yes, this conversation has not only been ongoing for years and years and years, but will continue into the future as well. It has to. It's a, it's a living environment and regulatory change, and just that the way we do business today is different than the way we did business in the past. So it has to constantly evolve. But as long as we're having the conversations and, and we have a, a culture of trying to get things through, they're doing some very exciting things in the entrepreneur space, the task force, the navigator, that I think will help. Education is key. Getting, you know, some of these people have an idea, they want to do something, but if they, if they put the cart somewhat before the horse, I'm not suggesting that's this case. I've found in my own small business, ninety-eight percent of surprises are bad. There's occasionally found money, there's occasionally a good thing, but normally in small business, a surprise is not a good outcome. So if you can educate yourself, get as much information as possible so that you're in the best shape to, to take on a task, and then the better off you'll be. Other than that, that's all I had. So, Mr. Manager, I think you were going to talk about a few things.
Really didn't have anything. Did you want to talk about the--
Well, then I was going to, yeah, okay. So I didn't know if the city manager was going to bring it up, but as you know, we're coming up for a renewal on our subscription or--
Membership.
Membership, rather, of REAP. And it's, it's something that, it's not a huge price tag, but yet it is something to consider. And whether or not that is something that this body thinks we need to continue or have some additional discussion with, are we getting our bang for our buck, so to speak? Does any, anybody have any thoughts on REAP?
Let me comment, first of all. I was on the Executive Committee of REAP for about a year and a half, two years, I guess, when I was the mayor and so on. And I would first of all acknowledge that I was not a very good person to attend their meetings regularly. That's my fault. That, that, that's my responsibility. Either the time of the day, or I found reasons not to go, and so therefore I was not as engaged that I probably should have been as a representative of the city of Hutchinson, and, and I apologize for that. This whole thing of regionalism has been a, it's been a tough task to get our arms around it as a community and relationship to Wichita and the metro areas versus Hutchinson and so on. There, I, I think, I think the organization has made some strides. I think the, the primary impetus that I've observed in reading their minutes and so on has been primarily labor force issues. Air transportation has been a real key issue, and have made some terrific strides in terms of improving our air service in south central Kansas. And so I, I, I think there's a good role and a good function for, for, for REAP. I was not the person to effectively represent our interest here, and I apologize for that, but I, I think we need to be a part of it. We're, we're a major first-class city in the region, and to me, I think it would reflect poorly if we were to no longer continue to be part of REAP. And hopefully somebody with, with more commitment than I had would be willing to be, be involved in their monthly meetings.
Very good. Anybody else have any thoughts?
Well, kind of following John's comments, likewise, I was not an extremely active. I think I went to a couple of meetings--
Yeah.
--during my term. It strikes me that, and I don't know how appropriate it would be, it, it may be better to ask for, for the involvement, or the ongoing involvement over late in the time, to be by the city manager. As mayors, as we, we rotate the mayor position, you've got a one-year gig, maybe a year and a half in some cases, but that's generally a year. And so it, it takes kind of spinning up to, to, to speed, and then by the time you're spun up to speed, you're, you're, you're moving off. So I think the mayor could be involved with, along with the city manager, but I think it'd be the city manager or some other staff position that could give some continuity. That would be the way to go, if we're going to make a commitment and, and carry through with it in terms of being involved.
I think some of the value in REAP comes in the ability for any of the electeds or anybody from the city to participate in their events. I do participate in several a year. I don't go to their business meetings, but when they have convenings on certain topics, I do try to go to those and always find it useful. I like that Hutchinson has a voice. When, when you talk about south central region, people seem to discount anything but Wichita. And the more that we disconnect from regionalism, I think that that's just going to exacerbate that problem. So having a seat at the table, I think is better than not.
Okay. Well, that's a decision that's going to have to be made in the next year, is that correct?
Well, we would go ahead and proceed making the payment in January. I, I think it was just, you know, in the past, we've just paid it, and I think it's--
Right.
--it's appropriate to have a--
It's worthwhile to have--
--conversation before we just up and pay it and be a member. But my plan would be based on, there's consensus is just to go ahead and process that membership payment, you know, right after first of the year.
Okay.
Like we have done in the past.
At the same time, I'd reemphasize, I think it needs to be maybe through next year, a time or two discussed, especially as we're going to have some change of, of management.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if there, if, if the council wants to move in the direction I suggest to be considered type of thing.
And historically, it's been my position that's, I mean, I've been to several meetings, and sometimes it's, you know, it's a Monday morning at eight, eight o'clock--
In Wichita, yeah.
--and back at eleven, and you just heard a couple of reports, and is it, what's the value of that?
Anybody who meets at eight o'clock needs to--
So I, I have not attended every meeting, nor would I next year if I were going to be here, but whoever replaces me would be a part of that, I'm sure.
The job descriptions are out, so we can't exactly add it to that.
Well, I think it could be added.
Yeah.
Other duties isn't needed.
Well, and maybe they need to look at their, I mean, an eight o'clock meeting in Wichita to me is, nah, you know how I feel about eight o'clock meetings.
Sure.
They may need to look at restructuring how they do business, too, if they want to get broader participation.
And their, their model is built around the electeds, and that's part of the deal is--
Yeah.
--electeds are makeup and board, not appointed. And appointed that are there are ex officio, if you will, and so that's traditionally the model there, so.
Well, it sounds like--
We'll, we'll proceed.
--with the process, but maybe--
Elections want to be there at eight o'clock.
--council needs to evaluate how much they want to participate or how they can participate. Was there anything else, John?
That's all I had, Mayor.
I forgot one thing, too. I, I, there was a blip in your weekly report about the Fund Valley and the subsidy. I thought that warranted at least mentioning it. Hutch Rec and through their stewardship of Fund Valley and programming of Fund Valley was able to not only not create a subsidy liability for the city, but they actually had a surplus, and I believe in excess of twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
And that's something we have not seen in some time. And that's a credit to the Hutchinson Rec and, and their stewardship of that program. So I thought it was worth mentioning. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It has been moved, and second?
Contained within the double move.
Yeah, if there's a second. Oh, within the double move. I will take a movement there in a second here for that work.
That's fine.
It has been moved, and second, please call the roll.
Deckent?
Yes.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Solner?
Yes.
Hirostake Carvalho?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.